Order, the meeting of the town council Tuesday, April eighth, six P. M. The first item on the agenda is the prayer by Chaplain J. R. McCroskey, followed by the pledge led by Councilmember Jake Rambo.
Please join me in praying in your faith's tradition as I pray in mine. Lord, thank you for this day and all your many blessings. Father, I thank you for the members of this town council, what they mean to our community, but more importantly, God, what they mean to you. Ask you, Lord, as they conduct the business of Mount Pleasant this evening, that would you would give them the eyes so they could see where we can make improvements? The ears, Lord, the ears so they they can hear the concerns of their fellow citizens? The hands so that they can do the work you have prepared for them? The heart, Lord, the heart so that they can love their fellow neighbor as themselves? And the feet so that they can carry that message forward? And I ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item is approval of the agenda. I believe Mr. Pagorini has a comment.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Well, ma'am, I've been made aware of two, well, one request, and I have a request on behalf of staff, and that is to move item seven B, which is a consent agenda item related to Pepper Track, to eight, to eight B five, which is council old business in order to discuss a possible amendment related to certain restrictions that council had mentioned last month, and therefore I believe it's not appropriate to be in the consent agenda. And I believe there was a council request possibly as well for an item to be moved.
Well, I'll go ahead and move to do as you stated, Mr. Pagorini. But item seven B to item which will become item eight B five.
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second. Who is our second? Mr. Brownstein, okay. And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and I believe someone had.
I have a second motion that we would move item three and four on the agenda that relates to Patriots Point Annex to after the public comment, which is quite a few people here, and that would give them the opportunity to.
Second.
So we have a motion to move item eight, B, three and four to item to right after public comment. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Howard, I believe you have a motion to approve.
I'll move for the revised version of the agenda.
All right, we have a motion for approval. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item four, public hearings, awards and presentations.
This is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget pursuant to section six, one eighty of the South Carolina Code of Laws. The total proposed budget of all funds is one hundred sixty-six million, three hundred three thousand and one hundred sixty-six dollars, and this maintains the same miller rate as the current fiscal year 2025 budget.
All right, we have a public hearing. Is there anyone here to make comments on this agenda item? You still have an opportunity during public comment to speak to other items, but if you're here to speak to the budget, please come forward now. Seeing no one, I declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to item five, approval of the minutes from the March eleventh special and regular town council meetings, the March twenty-eight, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five special council meeting and the February 2025 financial statement. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item six, we are in public comment. For public comment, we have two and a half minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. The timekeeper is there, and the town administrator will be calling names.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. First Speaker James McKeat.
Thank you. Hi, James McKeat, twelve forty-seven Palmetto Peninsula Drive. Patriots Point is a gem. My wife and I are frequent users. We're usually arriving there at Patriots Point on on our bicycles with our dogs sitting in baskets. One of the things we really appreciate about it is the view of the waterfront, the open space there, the opportunity to exercise and recreate in in an area that's very beautiful that represents the Charleston area and Mount Pleasant in particular. And I was really looking forward to the new annex development under the current zoning as a waterfront gateway, mainly because that's aligned with the comprehensive plan of the town. It took input from the citizens in terms of having large, open spaces for them to enjoy the waterfront like we like to do. And the new proposal unfortunately relegates the public to a central section blocked by a lot of buildings, and so the area that we would have had to enjoy the view of that waterfront as the public seems to be taken away for the benefit of the developer. So what I would ask you to consider would be who's going to protect the interests of the public except for you? And it seems like this new proposal of the rezoning and the new concept plan presented is in the developer's favor, not in the favor of the public. So thank you for your consideration.
David Halsey.
My name is David Halsey. I live in the Groves, on Seventeen Tall Pond Road. So my, I'm not sure because I don't know that one can stand outside and follow it all exactly which plan will do exactly what worse thing. Developers develop, and I would like to see as little development in that area as possible, but because I think it's important to maintain open space and maintain open views. And I don't know which plan or whether either of the plans have that as a paramount consideration. I think the Beaufort waterfront is quite functional. Charleston's waterfront went away, basically. There may be places you can walk, but it doesn't function anywhere like as it might have when it was first being starting to be developed. And I think the same thing is true with what's presently open space there now with with Patriots Point. I would love to see as much done as possible to not defer to developers whose interest is in developing, but defer to people whose interest might be in not developing. Thank you.
Lisa Schnipke.
I live at one eighty-five Masi Oakway here in Mount Pleasant. I'm here tonight to oppose the plan development district proposal currently being presented to change what is now the waterfront gateway district. This is state-owned land. It belongs to the public. Waterfront gateway zoning was created to protect it for civic and institutional uses. That's not what the PDD offers. What we've been shown is a private development plan on public land with vague language and some promises of what they intend to build. This request is coming from the same developer who in 2019 had the same property rezoned to waterfront gateway. Now they want to undo that, not because it serves the community, but because it serves their current business plan. Mount Pleasant is a suburban town. We're not a resort area. We don't really need another hotel, but we do need access to our waterfront property, and we need leaders like you to defend the value of this land, land like this that brought people like us here in the first place. This proposal doesn't serve the public's needs the way the waterfront gateway district was intended to. Please say no to this zoning request. There's a reason there's not much other waterfront gateway zoned areas. It's because there isn't much land like this left that's accessible to the public. This area is special and needs to have special considerations. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to request for time purposes that we do not have any comments, whatever, after people speak, because that, first of all, that part of Robert's Rules of Order. Second, we need to.
Comments from who?
We just had people clapping.
Clapping, I see. Okay, so yes, please, please do not.
David Spedden.
Hi, David Spedden, three, four, two, nine, Tumberkill Circle, Park West. Councilman Tinkie, congratulations on your victory. I enjoyed hanging out with you and talking to you at a lot of the group events, so I wish you the best. Hope you do a great job for us. Recently, there was an update about Route forty-one expansion in Alternate Seven in the Post and Courier. It was also a frequent topic during the campaign leading up to the special election. One group actually had us all complete a survey on it, and one of our group events pretty much was dominated by that topic. During these discussions, it was asked if the town council ever took a vote on a position of rejecting Alternate Seven. No one could recall it. I couldn't find anything in past minutes, so if you have, please let me know where so I can look at it. If you haven't, I think the people of upper Mount Pleasant would greatly appreciate you taking a vote, supporting them and saying no. I know the Charleston County may view that just as a symbolic gesture, but to the people in the community, I think it's very important to get that out there so we know exactly where you stand on that, and hopefully it's supporting us in saying no to it. Thank you.
Debbie Donovan.
My name's Debbie Donovan. I live at thirteen thirty-three Woodlock Road. I am speaking in reference to agenda item eight, B, one, the annexation of the property at twelve oh nine Vining Road. My property is directly adjacent to this. I understand that the planning commission has approved this with a twenty-five-foot buffer along the properties. That property along that line already has a utility easement there, so with that twenty-five-foot buffer, there's there's nothing there to do screening from this storage facility that is proposed, whereas there's a fifty-foot buffer that has been approved along Vining Road, which is a very small section of the entrance. So I would ask that a larger buffer is considered to screen those properties that are along there so that we the storage facility is more out of sight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Myra Richardson.
My name is Myra Snite Richardson. My address is twenty-seven fifty-five Earl Johnson Lane. I'm here to ask you to deny annexation of the three-point-eleven-acre track that's in the Hamlin Beach community, which is recently became an historic district in Charleston County. October twelfth, twenty twenty, Mount Pleasant established a settlement task force commission to address problems and protect the history and the culture of the settlement communities. Annexing this property into the town of Mount Pleasant will create havoc, will continue to almost in a sense connect the dots for other properties to be connected into out of the Charleston County District into the town of Mount Pleasant. This developer has an additional lot that's located on Boston Grill Road. If this three-acre track is connected into Mount Pleasant, that lot touches Mount Pleasant as well. They will be back before you to annex those properties into Mount Pleasant. We had issues with this track on Boston Grill Road, which is at fifteen seventy-three Boston Grill Road. They built higher than the people that surround them. It flooded them out with no care concern about the residents that were living there. One of our residents had to actually use water boots to get from her door to Boston Grill Road to put her daughter on the bus. So we're asking that you do not approve this to come into Charleston, I mean into Mount Pleasant. We also don't want the clear cutting of these properties. There's only three live oak trees on that property. It's a beautiful, beautiful wooded area that will be clear cut. It will create almost like a concrete desert. All the trees will be cut. They want to put nine, nine homes on this property. It will not work on that property. They say they would decrease the pond size, the retention pond. This will flood us out, so I'm asking you to please deny annexation into the town of Mount Pleasant for that three-acre track in the Hamlin Beach community. Thank you.
Lynn Fletcher.
Thank you. First, I want to second the lady that just came up about the trees, but I'm here to talk about the Patriots Point development and the waterfront gateway. Many of you have probably seen my comments on Next Door. What really stands out to me from that is I've heard lots of conflicting information. I hear pluses, I hear minuses, and what what I'm thinking is if I'm confused, it also sounds like there are there are members of the town council that are confused about what things mean. So what what should you do in that situation? Is that we need to vote today? Is that it needs to be thought about more? I'm just concerned about rushing a vote on rezoning when there are so many questions. And for me as a citizen, what I'm most concerned about are two things that I still have not heard anything about, which is traffic and flooding potential. So I don't know if traffic studies get done. I'm ignorant on that. I don't know what that looks like. This intersection at Patriots Point, I know, just got redone, and we spent a lot of money on it, but it still seems pretty small. It took me, you know, I was backed up on the bridge today just getting home to come here, so I can't imagine when there's three hotels and more office space and more retail space and all these things are going to be built at Patriots Point, and we have no idea what the road situation is. I'm also super concerned about flooding and trees. I am a tree hugger, I will tell you that. And so when I look at the the zoning that it wants to go to away from the waterfront gateway to the to the other one, I just see the twenty-five percent more trees could be cut down. And I don't know anything about how that is going to affect flooding there. I do have neighbors that have built, you know, built on an acre of land, very similar to what the lady just said, and they followed all the rules of zoning, and they've they've done what they're supposed to do, and the land still floods because they cut so many trees down. And I've also heard, you know, you can, they're going to replant more trees than they're going to cut. With all due respect, developers change their mind sometimes. So what agreements we have now, what, how do we know those are going to stick? And you can't cut down a tree this big and think it's going to have the same flood protection as a replanted four, six caliber inch tree is going to have. It just doesn't add up in the math. Those trees hold our soil. They hold our literal earth to the ground, and we have flooding problems in Mount Pleasant. I see it growing day to day, places I've never seen flood before are flooding now. So just, I hope you take this seriously. I hope you you consider all the factors.
Deidra Kennedy.
Hi, my name is Deidra Kennedy. I live at nine seven one Cliffwood Drive in the Groves. I'm here tonight because the decision about Patriots Point matters, not just for today's development, but for the long-term character and integrity of Mount Pleasant. In 2019, it was the same developer who requested the WGC zoning. WGC was created to ensure civic and institutional uses on state-owned land for the public's benefit. Now the same developer wants to undo their own zoning and rewrite the rules for their own benefit. That's not planning, that's opportunism. We've been told that the PDD gives the town more control, but what it really gives is a custom zoning deal full of developer-friendly terms, loopholes, vague language about the public's benefit, and strips out the firm protections the WGC was designed to provide, protections that were supposed to keep this land in the public realm. Some say the WGC is flawed because of theoretical height or density rules, but the real purpose of the WGC is preservation, preservation of access, scale, civic use and public trust. This isn't a resort. This isn't a tourist destination. This is Mount Pleasant, our home. The fact that the town and council has let it get this far without a concrete plan or vision is disappointing. This isn't about anti-growth, it's about pro-accountability, and accountability means capping residential with no loopholes, locking in a thirty-five-foot height limit at the waterfront, the whole waterfront, requiring recorded public access easements, not promises subject to later negotiations, guarantee free parking near the waterfront, mandating true civic, cultural and institutional uses in every phase, and eliminating any tree substitutions or buyouts. This is public land, and public interest needs to be protected. Let's not just hand it over under weak terms and wishful thinking. Tighten the PDD up or send it back. Thank you.
Mike Van Horn.
Good evening, Council. Mike Van Horn, Ironbridge Drive. Mr. Tinkie, I also want to congratulate you. It was a pleasure running with you as one of the nine candidates. And also, I'd like to have council consider, you know, as we move into seven months from now to the next election, we have an opportunity to sit there and bring the community together even more so about the upcoming election. You know, there's not many forums as far as for us to sit there as candidates to go out there and express our views, concerns or opinions as far as what we want to do. And I encourage council to sit here and take the opportunity to create that community awareness by having forums. I would like to formally announce that Quentin Washington has agreed to be the moderator of such a situation, if we would like to do that. Most of you may know Quentin Washington as far as his Quentin close-ups, so he does a phenomenal job, and also he's a very independent individual, so it's not biased towards one group or the other. So again, that's a recommendation in that sense. The other thing I'd like to talk about is also bringing the top of mind, making sure that, you know, with the budget, we also try to move forward with three readings of situations that are happening on council, also to make sure that we have the transparency of our spending, that it's put online for folks as well. And then the last thing I'd like to talk about is Phase On Road. If we can, please try to look for that traffic mitigation in that area. You know, before we have that warehouse totally booming with all kinds of industrial trucks or, you know, whatever they're going to use that facility for, we need to do some traffic mitigation along that area, because again, I don't want to see semis going across through the Park West area out towards forty-one, let alone coming into Mount Pleasant on seventeen and creating more traffic headaches for everybody on that side of town. As I mentioned last time, it it takes about ten minutes, around five o'clock, to go from Costco just to seventeen to make a right-hand turn. So again, just imagine with all the traffic, you know, with the semis involved, we're going to have a lot of headaches. So instead of working backwards, let's think forward and and get that mitigation in place now. Thank you.
David Quick. My name is David Quick. I live at fifteen oh two Village Square, and I'd like to talk about Patriots Point today. When you think about Mount Pleasant's jewels, the the things that we were most proud of, I think of Patriots Point, Shem Creek, Pitt Street Bridge, Laurel Hill Plantation, Boone Hall. We have to protect these core areas for the enjoyment of our citizenry. We're going into a time of great uncertainty, both in our national economics and at Patriots Point particularly, the latest news being the Charleston Harbor being sold, and we don't know who it is. I know that the developer has been patient. I've been to planning commission, planning committees, town council, back to planning commission. I can't really get my hands around this Patriots Point thing. It's always changing. There's always some new thing to it, and I think we need to pause still. We need to be conservative, take our time, make sure Patriots Point is done correctly. We need to protect our waterfront for everyone to use. If you go down there and you walk the trail now, it is nothing compared to what's happening in the city of Charleston. They are kicking our butts as far as the way they treat their waterfront. We need to do better. We need to protect Patriots Point. We need to protect the trail. We need to protect the trees, and we don't need to overdevelop. If you listen to the people of Mount Pleasant and Charleston County, the theme that's running through this community is to stop overdevelopment. And what I've seen so far at Patriots Point is overdevelopment. And and again, I applaud Bennett and his team for being patient, but we need to get Patriots Point right. We only have a few of these precious gems in Mount Pleasant that are publicly our legacy to future generations in Mount Pleasant. So please, there's so many details to go into, I don't even want to start to get in the weeds. Please protect Patriots Point. Thank you.
Well, please, let's just, you got to keep, keep moving. Mr. Demore, do you have more signed up?
Denise Fugo.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And I can't see anybody, so I'm going to walk over here, okay? Denise Fugo, Executive Director of Housing for All Mount Pleasant and one thousand Johnny Dodds Suite one oh three. I'm here really to address three items, and I'll do it quickly. One regarding the budget, Housing for All Mount Pleasant hasn't been funded by the town since 2018, and I'm really praying that you are going to fund us. We're working on some very good projects. Number two, I have to agree with Hamlin Beach. Hamlin Beach is a historic district, and it should not have any annexation into the town of Mount Pleasant. We're working to preserve its history, not to destroy it. So just providing water and sewer does not mean you should be taking other people's land again, okay? Finally, Patriots Point. Nineteen forty-eight, housing became a human right globally, so I'm here to discuss hu- human rights. This is an incredible project, thirty acres. I'm sure the cap rate that Mr. Bennett's going to get is twenty to thirty-five percent. Usually on hotels, we're getting thirty-five percent. But I want to talk about Patriots. Now, let's not let another person from outside of Mount Pleasant come in. Let's, I agree, I understand, we're going to get older and richer in Mount Pleasant, but we're not letting in anybody, strangers. But eight hundred and fifty-one employees and eight hundred of our patriots right there covering you guys, eight hundred of them cannot afford to live in Mount Pleasant, and they're not allowed to talk to me, and I understand that. Oh, and then Mr. Bennett is already an extremely wealthy and successful businessman, and we understand that wealthy and successful businessmen are the smartest men in our country. So let's use some leadership here, Mr. Bennett. And I was chairman of the National Restaurant Association, so I know exactly what he's paying his waiters. I know what he's paying his kitchen staff. I know what he's paying his managers, okay? And he's not paying them enough to live here. So we have eight hundred employees at the town of Mount Pleasant. I asked town council to show some leadership. There is plenty of retail in this project to put affordable housing in. Now, Mr. Wilson, who I have given my card to, and I have called and called and called and called, I asked that you ask Mr. Wilson to call me back, okay? I know the restaurant business very well. I know retail. I know hotels. If you want to help the people in this town, the what we have to focus on is our patriots, our fire, our police, our public safety workers, and you know you're having trouble with the firemen, and you know you're having trouble retaining teachers, and I'm out of time. Please, I thank the pastor, because his, his, his prayer was for you to use your heart and your brain.
Thank you.
Jeremy Kroska. Okay.
Can we have a stand?
I'm sorry?
Can we have a stand?
Well, at the end of the speakers list, there will be opportunities to speak again. Thank you. Danielle Case.
Danielle Case.
Danielle Case, three five eight three Goodwater Street. Let me just turn on Airplane Real Quick. Okay, hello, City Council. How many of you have used Neosporin on your skin? It's beneficial, right? Kills germs? So wouldn't it be wise to add it to the water supply? You know, that way we could all have regular ingestion of Neosporin, which is a topical medication. Forget whether you're an infant or an athlete needing to hydrate, dosage doesn't matter. Not a big deal if we need hazmat suits to add it to the water, or if it corroded the pipes, or if it cost money to fix that corrosion, or if we bought it from China. We should all be okay to drink it, right? What about if it lowered your unborn baby's IQ? Would you say it's still okay to add to everybody's water? Because that's what we're doing right now with fluoride. Yep, I'm talking about fluoride. And because applying something topically is not the same as injecting it. The toothpaste label says, "Don't swallow. If swallowed, call poison control." Then just tell you, "Don't eat an hour after we coat your teeth with this." In August twenty twenty-four, the National Toxicology Program released a huge monograph on fluoride. It showed there was a significant decrease in IQ for children in the womb of mothers who drank fluoridated water. In January twenty twenty-five, that's this year, JAMA Pediatrics did a huge seventy-four study meta-analysis that showed fluoride and lower IQ are tied. Late September twenty twenty-four, California sided with data from the aforementioned National Toxicology Program and against the EPA, and said the level presently considered optimal in the United States poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children. And that reduced IQ poses serious harm. Studies have linked IQ decrements of even one or two points to reduced educational attainment, employment status, productivity, and earned wages. And in April this month, there was a study from BMC Pediatric that even made a fluoride autism connection. In November twenty twenty-four, Florida Surgeon General recommended against public water fluoridation, listing reasons such as adverse effects in children, reducing IQ, cognitive impairment, and ADHD. In May of this year, Utah will stop fluoridation statewide. Let's get our city on board, too. Toothpaste and fluoride are super easy to find, very cheap, very affordable. I sound like a politician right now, but you know, I'm done, okay? But it's far easier for the less financial, and less financially burdensome for constituents to opt in than to opt out of mass fluoridation. Ingesting doesn't equal topical application. In a mass fluoridation society, only those who can afford expensive filtration systems can avoid drinking it, and even they can't avoid it completely if they buy produce that was watered by municipal water. In total, the benefit of fluoridation was possibly saving, quote, "one quarter of a tooth." Okay. Thank you.
Candace Johnson.
Hello, Candace Johnson, Cotton Creek Drive and Planner's Point. And this is going to be a little bit lighter of a topic, but I am here for the consideration of approval of, to create the Rainbow Bridge. This, I don't know, a little bit of background about it, but there's a legend that states that when your pet passes away, it goes over the Rainbow Bridge waiting for you. Good to get him. I've been working since December thirty-first when our dog Waffles. Sorry, I'm not going to make it a long story short either, but our dog Waffles tragically passed babe, and it came to light just how many people in this community were so supportive and so loving. And a little bit about Waffles is she wasn't just our dog, she was everyone's dog. She was an escape artist, got out of our tall fences, electric fences, everything, and had escapades all over the neighborhood that even our Facebook, neighborhood Facebook page coined a hashtag for, hashtag Waffles. And sometimes if they took a picture of an alligator on smoke rides, hashtag not waffles. And it just brought so much joy to so many people and so many smiles. And part, sometimes I'd be walking her, and people would be like, "Is that the famous Waffles?" She was the grand marshal of our golf cart parade in our neighborhood. So in memory of her, I've been working with the community, with help of friends, neighbors, the yoga community, and also the construction community, and got funds to donate a twelve-foot physical rainbow fridge to the town of Mount Pleasant, where people can go and hang their dog's collars or cat's collars. Like I said, Waffles was everyone's dog, and it just seemed so good, and just turned something tragic into something beautiful for so many, that people can find solace and connection in this world that so many things can tear us apart, but something that can bring us all together. Thank you.
Susan Carr.
Good evening. Susan Carr, sixty-two East Lake Road. My comments are in reference to Patriots Point. In healthcare, we refer to the guiding principle to first do no harm when making decisions surrounding patient care. In that same spirit, I ask the council to adhere to the same principle when making decisions that impact the health of the Mount Pleasant community. Please, first do no harm. Thank you.
Allison Hunt.
Hello, Members of Council. Allison Hunt, Executive Director, Patriots Point Development Authority, forty Patriots Point Road, Mount Pleasant. Thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening. I'm here on behalf of the Patriots Point Development Authority in support of the continuing process that our partners at the town of Mount Pleasant and our tenant partners Bennett Hospitality have been working through with the zoning amendments and the development, the extension of the development agreement for the thirty-acre Patriots Annex property. The lease revenue from Patriots Annex, as well as all of our tenant partners, helps Patriots Point fund the maintenance and upkeep of our two highly decorated National Historic Landmark World War II warships that are important part of the Mount Pleasant community. Preserving these ships is central to our mission, which in part is to operate a museum of ships to foster patriotism, generate pride and respect for the U.S., and honor our valiant dead from World War II to the present. Thank you for your continuing support for Patriots Point and for our mission.
Madam Chair, that's all I have signed up to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not have a chance to sign up to speak who would like to just come forward to the mic?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Hammerbacher. I live at one eight four North Plaza Court. I'm here to oppose the Patriots Point development. I've been coming to these meetings for many years, and we've talked about density and height for many years, that the public does not want more density and height, especially we've talked about around the bridge. We've got plenty, or more than enough, of hotels and whatnot. We've got too much density. Other reason I'm here is I live at the Renaissance on Patriots Point. And while you're considering all this development out there, I would like you to consider Bridgeside Boulevard where the Renaissance is and the Rice Building workers. We have one exit to get out onto Patriots Point, and it's getting harder and harder every year to get out on Patriots Point. I don't know if you can do a circle there or what you want. You're the planners, but I appreciate something planned for that area, because the more we get density, it's harder to get out on Patriots, especially with all the games and soccer, baseball, whatnot. So I wish you'd consider that Patriots and Bridgeside Boulevard intersection. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bob Solazo. I moved here about five years ago, and I moved here for a reason. I came across a place called Patriots Point, which was, I thought, beautiful, and I lived in New York City. So if you want to talk about overdevelopment, I could talk to you for hours about overdevelopment, okay? And I and several other people, ninety-nine units, put quite investment into Patriots Point. Some of our units run from two to four million dollars, okay? Since I've been there, okay? You have the Comfort Inn, you have the Shriners, now you have a brand-new hundred-and-fifty-unit hotel or apartment house that's been built, and right next to it across the street, you have now another hotel that's being built, I believe. That's another hundred-and-fifty units, okay? By Mr. Bennett, okay? Across the street, fine baseball field, College of Charleston, no problem. Right next to that is the soccer field. And when we have soccer game, my wife and I had an appointment the other night, it was a soccer game. We could not leave our parking lot to get out into the street for almost an hour. They parked on the lawns, they park on, double park on the streets, okay? Now, with all that traffic going, taking place puts the carrier down the road, you want to put all these people in and all these developments in. Where is all this traffic going to go? It's a two-lane in and a two-lane out. And when you come to that intersection, you could probably just about get out anyway. So all I'm saying, take a good look at it, because you're overdeveloping, you're destroying a beautiful place in town for what? And the only thing I'll say, because I got a little involved in it when I came down here, across the street's the golf course. I play golf. I like golf. So when I went over there, the reason to join, it was a nice golf course, but it needed work. And Mr. Bennett just bought the golf course with the understanding that he leased it from the state, so I understand, with the understanding that he was going to redo the whole golf course in five years. Well, Mr. Bennett, since five years has passed, has put new, two new golf cart trails in and fixed four golf tees. He hasn't done anything else to the golf course. You still can't drive on the fairways. You can't, you still, you still can't hit out of the sand trap. Nothing has been done, okay? Just keep that in mind, all right? So I'm just saying, take a look. You've got a beautiful place here. Don't ruin it. Thank you.
Good evening. Diane Lauritsen, seven oh five Bradburn Drive. Thank you all for what you do, and Mr. Tinkie, congratulations. There have been a lot of good comments made about the Patriots Point development and the possibility of redoing the zoning, and I guess I would just like to make a couple of points that haven't yet been made. Patriots Point is a gateway for migrating waterfowl as well as a gateway for people. And so I think that, as David Quick said, it is a jewel for us to appreciate the views, but it's also important because it provides important habitat for some of the creatures that call this place home, or temporarily call it home. So tourism is lucrative, but there's ecotourism as well. And so that's something to keep in mind with respect to providing the kinds of opportunities for people to come and see what's naturally here. And the last point I'd like to make is that anything that's done here in terms of changing the zoning, I think sets a precedent for doing that with future development. And I'm thinking in particular, if Republic Tract is acquired, for example, it's going to be a lot of the same issues. And so I think if you can slow down and make sure that we get what everyone wants to the greatest extent possible, that you will benefit our community. Thank you.
Alicia Lockwood. I live at three one six Lapling Lane, Mount Pleasant. I'd like to discuss the Patriots Point planned development zoning, and I'm not that knowledgeable about the project, but I don't see any sound reason for changing the zoning at this time. It is a valuable property and a great asset to the public, and I think we would like to keep it like that. Secondly, I just want to say something you're probably all aware of, that times they are changing. We are facing potential economic uncertainty in the near term. Is this the right time to enter into such a huge commercial development? I urge cautious consideration in this matter. We have enjoyed tourism growth for thirty years now, at least. I live two miles from here, and there are either eight or ten hotels within a mile of me. So I'm not certain we need one more or two more. But I want to say that nothing goes up forever. Mount Pleasant has been doing that for a long time, and we may be facing a very different future now. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shell Stress from five forty-five for interview in Mount Pleasant. First, Mr. Tinkie, congratulations. I'm very excited. I couldn't write down enough of the great comments that everybody said up here. I'm really amazed at how many people showed up for, in support of not changing the zoning and for in protecting Patriots Point. I think that, I mean, I can't really say much more, but I will underscore something that this man said here in that about the golf course, that was, certain things are promised the same developer didn't produce. I mean, we can, if we look at history, we can kind of predict the future. My husband works in construction. He works with a lot of developers, and we've been together for a long time. Developers don't always tell the truth, and the wording is so vague that it gives way too many opportunities for them to change their promises. You know, the beauty of Patriots Point is that we can all access it. And I don't know if you, well, I know, I'm sure all of you have been to Myrtle Beach, Key West, those places, you can't even access, the sea is for everyone, and you can't even access it without going through a building to get to it, or going around, or asking permission. It shouldn't be like that. If you compare Myrtle Beach to, let's say Sullivan's Island, you go on Sullivan's Island, and it's beautiful. You feel how beautiful it is because it's open, it's accessible to all of us. And this design is closing that off. We, the sea is ours. It's for all people, all people. You don't have to be shopping or in a hotel. It's for all of us, and let's keep it that way, because we don't have much of it left. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak?
Hello, my name is Tori Sanders at one thirty-one Spring Street. I serve as the Communities and Transportation Project Manager at the Coastal Conservation League. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on Patriots Annex Plan Development and the Development Agreement. We appreciate the thoughtful planning that has gone into the project and recognize its potential to provide high-quality public waterfront access while respecting the environmental sensitivity of the site. We especially are glad to see the thirty-five-foot waterfront critical line buffer planted with vegetation, as well as the forty-foot-wide open area with the ten-foot-wide public walkway. These elements help ensure that the waterfront remains accessible and resilient. As this project moves forward with implementation, we urge the town to, the town and its partners to remain committed to the intent of those requirements. Looking ahead to the design and construction phases and in the spirit of getting Patriots Point correct, we offer some brief recommendations to ensure that the end results align with the spirit of the developer-stated goals, particularly those related to walkability in traffic, natural resource protection, and low-impact development. We'd like to see shared parking strategies to reduce the overall footprint of impervious surfaces. You know, large surface parking lots undermine walkability and contribute to runoff, but shared parking paired with green infrastructure and permeable materials can help reduce these impacts. We'd really also like to see strong support for multimodal access throughout the site and actually integrate public transit connectivity. Given that the nearest car to stop is a twenty-minute walk from the site, we encourage the town and the developer to consider providing a shuttle connection to and from the bus stop to improve access for transit riders and reduce the need for onsite parking. These approaches are essential to achieving the developer-stated goals of internal trip capture and will reduce traffic. We would also like to see the preservation of existing mature trees and native plants wherever possible, particularly along the waterfront and pedestrian corridors, ensure that the forty-foot open area includes naturalized landscaping, not just hardscape. We recognize the framework is largely in place for this project, but would just like to see the commitments that were already made honored. We would also like to note that these shared comments, we share these comments, excuse me, with our partners at Charleston Moves, who are unfortunately not able to attend, but share our concerns. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm James Wilson. I live at 722 Drag Union Drive in Creekside here on behalf of Patriots Annex. So hopefully I've got a little bit of positive news listening to all those comments. So as you all know, we went to Planning Committee for our fourth trip last week. I think we had a good conversation. Out of that was yielded three very specific items that we agreed, yes, let's change those. And we did that and resubmitted. And we thought that was positive and we understand now, I think we understand that some council members have some additional items that they would like to talk to and we remain glad to talk about those, as we've tried to say throughout. Just to be clear on a couple of things, you know, so this is not all of Patriots Point. This is the area right in front of the York Town, which is largely a, you know, parking lot right now. That's what this zoning is about, not all of Patriots Point. You all know that, I just want to make sure everyone understands. The PD at this point that we're proposing is actually, you know, it does not increase height, it does not increase density. You can't build more stuff under this PD than under the waterfront gateway. Just the opposite, it's actually more restrictive now. You know, what we've agreed to, as you all know, is to actually bring down the residential density by a third. We've agreed to take a piece of it in the center of the waterfront and lower the height, as you all know, and we've agreed to increase the open space. So this is actually now more restrictive than what the WGC is. But as we've told you before, and we really mean it, if council's preference is to stick with waterfront gateway, we can really do that. That is okay. And we're really here to say, and we can put those things into the PD as requested by the town and do exactly what folks are asking for and what you all want. We really just need you all to tell us honestly how you would like to best do that. We're here to keep working with you. We genuinely think this is going to be a positive thing. The waterfront, under the waterfront gateway and under the PD, that will be public, that will be publicly accessible, that is, that is open, that is a requirement under the PD, under waterfront gateway. So please feel free to ask us questions. We're happy to work with you as we have.
Thank you.
And thank you, Eric. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? All right, public comment is now closed. Moving on in the amended agenda, we are going to be taking up items three and four from Old Business, which are final reading for amendment to the ordinance and adoption of PD.
Thank you. Good evening. Let me wait a second or move forward?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. So as you said, this is final reading for, and I've combined the two. It's for the Development Agreement, which expired in October. So it's to extend that for another five years. And it's to rezone the property from its existing waterfront gateway to the planned development, as we've talked about. So I'd really just like to start where we left off last week at our committee meeting. And, and since that time, I've provided you all with the most updated planned development document and then that Mr. Wilson provided to staff. And in addition to that, I included this sort of summary chart.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, of course.
Sorry. Just real quick, I want to just make a really, really quick comment for, before more people leave, because I thought that was important that they stayed to listen and we moved the agenda item up for all to hear. So I appreciate all those that are staying here to listen to this because that was really important that they stayed, but that's okay. I'll be the one to say. The waterfront gateway, just to be clear, already allows a development.
That's correct.
To be put there.
That's correct. Yeah.
So this isn't a zoning to go from flat land to a PD that is building things. This is an already, I don't know if I want to use the word vested, because I think I'm using the wrong word, but they already have zoning rights and a lease and the ability to build. So I think we all have to understand that first and foremost before moving forward, that this is not blank land going to building. It is building going to the council, maybe taking over and having their own suggestions in it. So sorry for interrupting, but.
No. Yes, sir, you're correct. This is a 30-acre portion that's adjacent to the York Town. It is already zoned for waterfront gateway, so it already has an approved development plan. It's a large mixed-use, it's going to have hotels, retail, commercial, residential units. What the difference is, under the base zoning versus the PD, as you all have been involved, is that's been a negotiation process and that's where we are tonight. So the last four months, as you all have worked through that process with the applicant, this is where we've landed and what they have submitted based on that feedback where we're at. And so I've provided this table to you and I'll highlight some of the big ones. You know, the 160 inches, which is, I'd also like to point out real quick, where the waterfront gateway or the planned development do not address a specific requirement, we still have requirements in place. So any misinformation that may be out there that if the waterfront gateway or the PD doesn't explicitly address it, we always revert back to the town standards. So I wanted to make that clear. So with regards to the, the tree inches, right now you have to either retain 160 inches per acre or you pay into the tree bank. If you can't retain it, you have to plant it or pay into the tree bank. There's not 160 there now, so they'll have to plant. What they have requested and what is before you is the 120 inches per acre. The mitigation requirements, that is the same, based on the committee meeting, that you're already allowed to pay up to 20% into the tree bank for your mitigation. That is also in the planned development. Open space, the current zoning requires a minimum of 10%. They have proposed 12%. The waterfront public walkways are the same, the critical line buffer is the same. The overall density, what is currently allowed is 12 units an acre, they have proposed eight units an acre. And then I know we talked a lot about parking at the Planning Committee. Those standards are the same, whether you're in the waterfront gateway or you're in the planned development. And mixed-use development, you determine your parking requirements through what's called a ULI, a shared parking study. So that will be something that staff has already reviewed, will continue to review as this project is phased in. And as Mr. Agathon actually pointed out, this has received a master plan approval at the Design Review Board. And they've actually brought in Phase One, which is Seafair Village. That's already been approved and is to be under construction if it's not already. So that's where we've landed tonight. I have all of our old slides from the last four months that I'm happy to go into if you want to discuss any specific issue. I know Mr. Tinkie brought up a few things about the mix of uses, what that would look like. So we've added some things in there. So I'm happy at this point to talk further about anything that you would like to discuss.
Madam Chairman? Yes. I would like to make some comments where we are. First of all, the land that we're talking about is owned by the state of South Carolina. It's not owned by Mr. Bennett, it's not owned by the town, it's owned by the state of South Carolina. Having said that, the waterfront gateway district, as stated in the ordinance itself, is to be an integrated district with a network of pedestrian paths, streetskates, including walks along the waterfront. I would like to thank Mr. Bennett and his staff for agreeing to negotiate a lot with us in public. We've done this completely transparent. And we invited them to do that, they agreed to do it. The waterfront gateway is currently on the town's zoning ordinance. And it involves preserving existing views. This project does that extensively, both through, through it as well as along the waterfront. And this was all part of the negotiations we had with them. We applaud them for doing that, but we're not done. We're not done. The waterfront gateway allows 12 units per acre, 12 units. This slide suggests eight units is where we are. I would contend that that's not where we are because the Planning Committee specifically presented in an open, public setting, a total number of units of housing of 130. And if you multiply the 12 times the 30 acres, you'll see that 130 units is a whole lot better. But that's all been through negotiations, as has the amount of parking required at these housing units. These housing units were initially only going to have one space. We've jumped it up to one and a half to two per space, as is what we have in residential units throughout the town. We also negotiated a better amount of planning in the size of the plants at, at the, within the development. One of the things that caught my eye with the latest set of plans is that we're supposed to be creating public spaces, including walks along the waterfront and outdoor retail One of the things that I saw dealt with gated parking. Now Patriots Point currently has gated parking, but I'm not sure we want to see gated parking at this location. So that's one of the items, Mr. Wilson, we'd like to talk about. Also, along the sidewalks on both sides of all streets within the Patriots Annex, and the name of this project is Patriots Annex, it's not Patriots Point, there was something that came up in December talking about Patriots Point. This is Patriots Annex and it's only 30 acres. In the new development guidelines, it suggests sidewalks should only be five feet. I think we need eight feet because we're inviting the public there and we want a lot for public. What I'm, what I'm suggested is that on page 12, 3.8.14 talks about gated access. That's the first time I've seen that. And we have lowered the height at a specific, at specific locations to make it easier to see through to the waterfront. And we have made sure that the walkway along the waterfront is open and has good plants. I just think that we've done a lot, but it may be that we need to do some more based on the latest plan. I like the fact that we've got a large amount of parking and it meets the requirements of ULI. So I think it's important for everybody to understand, we have negotiated in public. We have in those negotiations made sure that it complete transparency. So if you came here thinking we haven't done it in the open, I would encourage you to look and see how far we've gotten. And as Mr. Wilson said, we've sent it back and forth to the Planning Committee several times. We may not be done yet, but we are working on it. And Mr. Bennett has been very, very much involved and has given a good bit. We may need to do more, but we've had a very good relationship with him in doing this. And I think we're going to get a very good project eventually, but we need to do a few more of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is there any other comments or should Ms. Reed continue? Oh, Mr. Branson?
Yes, thank you very much. And I agree with a lot of what Mr. Chapman said. And I do want to thank everybody who's come out to speak with us because your input definitely will help us as we move this forward. I think one thing I wanted to point out, and I think, so this is the initial site plan, correct, Michelle? That's up right now?
No, so what I did was, there was, so this is the adopted height map. There, they have offered up the 35 feet, lowering to 35 feet in the front. So that's what that looks like. I tried to put that on the height map so you could see it. But that is the entire adopted height. So you have the 80 along the street, 65, 50, and then that section that they are lowering it to 35.
Yeah, so, and I think what's interesting to me is when you see this initial height map, you can kind of see what it, what it looked like back in the day when it was approved, which was what, 2019?
Yes.
And then if you flip forward to what it currently looks like now, it's moving in the right direction, in my view. It's smaller buildings, more of a village feel versus the old blockier, larger buildings. But I do think there are some things that we need to address related to public access. I think there's some things that we could take from the waterfront gateway in my conversations with Mr. Tinkie, who I'm sure is going to speak at length about this. Taking some of those goals from the waterfront gateway and putting them into the, into the PDD. From my viewpoint, the PDD is an opportunity for us to negotiate with the developer and to hopefully get some concessions that we would like to see, that we think would result in a better project than under, under the waterfront gateway. And I think, you know, a fallacy is, that I've seen is to say, well, Carolina Park is in a PD and we're not happy with the direction that that development went. But the reality is that each PD is a unique zoning agreement. And so the one at Carolina Park, you know, has a lot of history going back to the early 2000s and was not even initially negotiated by the town. It was negotiated with the county and then at one point the town took it over. And so I think these are two different things. And so I hope that, you know, people won't jump to conclusions just because we see the result of a poorly negotiated PD somewhere else. I don't think this is that. I think this is getting better as it, as it moves through the process. It's clearly not ready to be voted on tonight, but I think that we can all provide some feedback that will result in a, in a better overall project and one that benefits locals and not, not just tourists. So I think that if we take some of those goals from the, straight out of the waterfront gateway, and I'm sure Mr. Tinkie's going to mention it, I think that improves it. I think we need to be careful to make sure that there aren't buildings that are purely residential and that's truly a mixed use. I really like an idea that I think Mr. Tinkie will say in a minute related to the tree mitigation. So I do think that we're moving in the right direction. I think it wouldn't be appropriate for us to cut this off or to, or to vote on it tonight. Let's, let's put everybody's viewpoint in it and get another document that's, that's got that input reflected and let's, let's keep the process going. Thank you.
Mr. Tinkie?
Thank you. I'd like to applaud the people coming tonight. I reflect back to Union Pier discussions when we had a whole, a large gathering of 1,000 people almost, that were very concerned about Union Pier and the waterfront and the importance of that to the community. This is really sort of our Union Pier. So it really gives us an opportunity to get it right. I applaud what Howard and Daniel said in the. I applaud what Howard and Daniel said in the developers, they want to get it right too. And I think, reflect also to the noise ordinance where we went back and forth. We were five to one way, four another, four to one way, five to another. But we ended up a unanimous vote because we deliberated and took the time. We took the time to listen to each other carefully, to take the time to sort of take the hysterics out of it and really get a plan that was a public, in this case, for the public, for the public and a one that reflected on the environmental landscape that we have, that augmented our environmental landscape, that improved our living shoreline, that made sure that our trees reflected our native habitats, that kept that small residential feel. I think what's been moving forward in front of the seafare, it's not locked into the agreement, but the fact that there's smaller units there. Clearly I'd like to see those memorialized because those are, I believe, close to 35 feet too. So that'd be important because then you really get a feel for being able to linger longer and enjoy the space. As I look at this, I think an effective way to do it, and we did this with the noise ordinance, is we just took the ordinance and we went page by page, line by line. And we had a discussion on that and we came to an agreement because we were very analytical about it with the idea of the waterfront gateway goals being the guide. So one of the first things I think we would do is replace the goals in the Patriots Point Development Authority with the goals in three point A, B, C, and D of the waterfront gateway. They're much the same, but they're more expansive and talk a little bit more to things like, as we go on avian habitat, migratory birds, ecotourism. It doesn't speak to that, but the ecotourism is a wonderful thing in this area. When I was talking to someone recently, they remembered that when this was a bird sanctuary and it still is, but it's diminished. And so we can come back and not only protect, preserve, but we can restore some of that if we do it right. But I think we need to take the time. I think it would be a mistake to vote tonight on one way or another. I would tend to want to vote to defer, even though it seems like it's taking time. Vote to defer, take the time between now and then to find out ways where we could go line by line in a way that was open and transparent, that we could get to a better place. We are making progress, but let's be clear about this. The waterfront gateway district could be improved from the developer's standpoint, but it also could be improved from our standpoint. And so that's where we are. We're getting there, but we're not there yet. Will we get there? Maybe, maybe not. But if we don't give it an effort, we know we won't get there. So I think it's important to take the time and do this. I look at the list here, for example, and there's just a couple of things here. Trees are important. So under the current plan, it's not clear as to whether sable trees, sable palms can be substituted for canopy trees. Well, we certainly don't want to have sable in mass substituted for that. And as Mr. Brownstein said, we don't want really residential on the ground floor or purely residential. This is a mixed use development. It should be truly mixed use. And as I go down the, a couple of the other items, the waterfront, I reflect on what the community conservation was talking about. It's important that we have that living shoreline and we have a wide enough space that it allows us to not have the shadow of buildings, but wide enough space that we have breadth. If you look at the best facilities around the world, whether on the waterfront, lakefront, harborfront, those are ones that have ample space and many times it's 100 feet or 150 feet. So the fact that we're all working towards wide spaces here, and I believe the developer wants to do that too, wants to have more space there, I think is a good thing. So I would, in my mind, I would move to defer, but have a more definitive way about going about reviewing this and be page by page, article by article. I think we've been working through this now and it'll give us a framework that will allow us to move forward a little more expeditiously. And we may quickly find we don't have a deal. We don't have a deal, but we could have a deal. And so I think that would be my thought.
So we have a motion to defer on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the deferral? Mr.?
I'll be voting no on the motion to defer. I think we've been negotiating this. I think some of the things that you mentioned were no-gos from the developer in my conversations with them. And so I'm just to the point where I'm ready to just deny it. So that's where I, so I'll be voting no on the defer.
All right. Mr. Acufano?
Well, my other question becomes, I understand the motion to defer. I do wish that if this, going back to planning, not all of us are on planning, it would be a lot more efficient if all of us were discussing this in a workshop or something of the sort in front of the public. Because what happens is, is it goes back to four council members and then comes back here to nine. And then we, and then there's an issue or changes or whatever it is, and then it goes back to four and then comes back to nine. So I'm a big fan of workshops. We tried one, you know, it's a good first try on another unit, but you know, a workshop would get things done a little quicker because I believe we're, with or without, with or without our discussion, this plan development expires in, on what date? The opportunity of discussing this
To vote.
To vote on this plan development expires very soon and it just goes back to waterfront gateway.
So yeah, so the ordinance states that six months from the first time council sees this proposal. So I think you saw it in January. So it's six months from your January meeting.
So June meeting is the last, June or July meeting is the last one then?
July.
July would be the last meeting on this.
I think your idea of a meeting of the whole is a good one if you would be willing to amend it.
I would love that. I would, I'd be happy to, but I didn't make the second. But yeah, I'd be happy to amend that. I would love that.
Yeah, so your amended motion is to-
We didn't make a motion to do that.
Yeah.
You have to make a motion first.
Right, and we currently have a motion on the table. We have a motion to defer. And I don't know that we would need a motion in order to hold a committee of the whole, would we?
No ma'am, you don't. Obviously, under our rules, the mayor can call it, but if council-
Or multiple council members can call it.
That's right.
So as long as you have three council members, you can call a committee of the whole. So we don't need a motion on that. So we're still on the motion to defer. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this motion? Okay, I have some, I have some thoughts. I think that we have, I agree with Mr. Tinkie in that, you know, we spent two years on a noise ordinance to try to get that right. It was a long time. And this ostensibly is far more important to our community than a noise ordinance as far as what happens at Patriots Point. I think, I agree with what Mr. Acufano said, of saying it's sort of setting forth for the public, that the purpose of the Patriots Point Development Authority and the land grant was to support the Yorktown, was to be revenue generating to support the Yorktown. So this land, the purpose of it and the current zoning on it by right is to be developed, like it will be developed regardless. So I think there was some misinformation in the public that this land could somehow be preserved in its entirety. And that's just incorrect. It will be developed. I think what I fundamentally struggle with is, are we going to get better than waterfront gateway? We have had the discussion of 130 units per acre at one of our public meetings. Mr. Bennett waved his hand, thumbs down. You know, he was not in favor of 130 units per acre. His maximum drop was down to eight units per acre, which is 240 units. At some level, 240 versus 12, 12 units per acre is not that material of a difference in my mind. There was some, you know, this reduction in the tree, caliper inches actually creates more opportunity to maximize that residential, whereas I think staying with the current waterfront gateway zoning has an increase in the number of caliper inches of trees per acre. And a 2% increase in open space, while wonderful as far as open green space, actually means less trees. And because you have more open, you know, space. I think there's concerns about public access. You know, I mean, for the developer's purpose, the purpose is to get people there in order to shop and stay. And for the community here, the purpose is to go enjoy the waterfront. And so I have concerns about parking and paid parking versus unpaid parking and sort of all those things. The developers repeatedly stated that they're fine sticking with waterfront gateway. So why not? Why not? And unless we think that we can somehow negotiate something better than waterfront gateway. And I'm so torn on this one because my instinct is to vote no to the deferral. But pardon me, it's like, well, let's give, you know, maybe we give another chance to negotiate, but I feel like we've been doing this for a really, for a long time. No reason why it can't be longer, I guess. But my instinct is to deny at this point and do waterfront gateway. Any, anyone else? Ms. Hyatt?
I would just say that I'm fine with a deferral as long as we can come up with something that matches waterfront gateway more closely, that we can preserve some of the aspects of that that are really important. So continuing the conversation is fine with me.
Mr. Acufano?
I've got one more. I love negotiating. We'll negotiate right now if we can. So-
I call for a question.
Well, I've just got one, I've got one, I've got one statement. And if you'll allow me, why don't we just bring the waterfront-
We've had a call for the question and procedurally, where do we go from here?
Our ordinance provides that all council members should be given the option to speak. If there's a call for the question, then there would have to be a vote of council in order to end debate.
I can wait till the national speak.
You withdraw. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rambo.
Well, I don't know why we just don't go waterfront gateway and paste it over, is what I'm hearing. And eight units an acre and tree mitigation to get you to the 160 inches from the 120 inches. And no apartments on the ground floor. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, no apartments on the ground floor. The avian friendly habitat and the 35 feet at some spots on the water is what I'm hearing. I mean, I don't know if the developer wants to take that back, but that's what I'm hearing. And I'm happy to also have the, the council as a whole too. But that's what I'm hearing here. And then I will digress.
All right, we have the motion defer and a second on the table. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven to one to defer. Our one no vote was Mr. Rambo. Oh, sorry, and Mr. Acufano, so sorry, six to two, six to two, a no on the deferral. And then just note for council that we can ask Mayor Haney to call a special meeting or there's three members of council that can call a special meeting on that. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. We are on the consent agenda, final reading of items A, we took B out, C, D, and E. Do I have a motion?
So moved to approve all consent agenda items.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second?
Just a quick question. That doesn't include item B, right?
That's right. Item B is moved to old business.
Yeah, it's A, C, D, and E.
A, C, D, and E. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Final reading of consent agenda items A, C, D, and E.
That moves us on to section 8A1, first reading of ordinance to annex Hamlin Beach Road. End zone community conservation. Are we talking about those together?
Yes ma'am. I'm going to take those two together in the presentation and then they can receive separate votes. So as you said, this is first reading to annex-
I've moved to approve items one and two together.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion to annex End Zone.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chapman?
Could we ask Ms. Reed to explain our conservation district because a lot of what's in there is similar to what the county is already doing. So we're not taking something away to allow it to be overdeveloped. We're creating a district that's similar to what they're, that they've done. So that's one good point. The other good point is it'll be developed in Malplaisant with our regulations, which I think is important because whether they're annexed or not, they're still going to be used in our services and it's going to be part of the town. Most people will think it's part of the town. So that's, that's why I second the motion. But Ms. Reed, if you could explain what our conservation district does and how the regulation is important for the settlement communities because they helped us create that.
Yes, sir. So the town and the county are very similar in the base zoning. In the county, it's zoned S3. In the town, if it came in, it would be zoned CC. Both of those are, as you said, to protect these areas and to require larger lots. So it's 12,500 square feet. And it really is to protect the historic development patterns that have occurred in these areas. The difference is that the county currently has a historic overlay in the district. They adopted that in January. And with that overlay district, they applied a two-year moratorium on major subdivisions. So, so within this district, and I'll go back to the map, within that historic overlay district, so you can see it here, it's kind of that gold color. And you can kind of faintly see our parcel we're talking about there. So, so while the base zoning districts are the same, the historic overlay, the town does not have that in place. So if it were annexed in, it would be pulled out of that historic overlay. And, and so that moratorium and those overlay guidelines would not apply. And that overlay is very similar to our historic district preservation commission in that there's a, there's a commission, they have to go to it, there's a map, staff reports, and then they have to issue a certificate of appropriateness, much like our HDPC does. And so it's very similar to our historic district guidelines. But that is, that is very specific to the county. The town does not have that overlay in place. But the base zoning, you're absolutely correct. Those are, those are the same as far as the S3 versus the community conservation.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So I did speak with a source of the county. And while it is in that historic overlay, that's currently being challenged and there's not a whole lot of optimism that those regulations that they have will stick. And so I think by denying, if it ends up being denied, the development will happen anyway and they're going to get water and sewer since we denied. And then the town no longer has any control or future interest in the property, so.
Purpose for their moratorium, it's to establish the historic?
So it's really to hone in on their guidelines that they want to have in place. So they want that two-years moratorium, no major subdivisions, so that they can refine those historic district guidelines is sort of the intent.
Have they started any?
Yes.
What have they, have they published anything that would?
Yes.
How different might it be from what their S3 zoning?
I don't think it'll be a lot different than their S3, but they would still have to go to that historic district, that overlay historic preservation commission in the county. And so much like ours, they're going to look at the surrounding uses. They're going to look, they're even going to look at design and architecture, the development patterns. They're going to look at all those things, so.
I have a question. With the three units per acre, they would have to subdivide in order to build that, right? The property is currently just one. And so it would be at least a two-year delay.
Right. To do anything more than, I believe it's four lots. Four or more is considered a major subdivision and that's what the moratorium is for.
I see. Do we have it? Mr. Tinkie? Oh, Mr. Brownson?
Yes, thank you. For me, this one is a really close call. I think it's, we're kind of damned if we do and damned if we don't. I think on one hand, if we say no to this, it allows them to bring sewer to the site. And so then there's no incentive for them to join the town at any point. And it's developed under the county standard. And it's developed under the county standards, which are, in my opinion, lesser than, than the town standards. And then that also signals to other areas of the settlement communities that they could also apply for annexation because they're in this historic district and we'll say no and they'll get sewer. And so we could end up with a net result of, of a lot of county development within our footprint. But then again, if we say yes to this, you know, we're taking it out of the, the county's historic district. And that signals to, to other people throughout the settlement communities that the way to escape those county historic regulations is to join the town. And I think, you know, the, the bottom line is that if, if we, we say no, they get the sewer, it eventually develops. When they call 911, it's probably our police officers there first, our fire engines there first. Yet they're not paying into those services through their, their property taxes. So it's just a really, in, in my mind, it's a really unfortunate situation that we're being put in here. I'm inclined to, to support the annexation because I do believe that our, our town standards are going to be better than those, those county regulations. And I think if we say no and they get access to the sewer, we could end up with a lot of development that we wouldn't necessarily want and we would have no control over. But I just, I just want to note for the record that this is a really close call. And it is causing me a considerable amount of heartburn. So thank you.
Mr. Tinkie?
Well, this is a tough one for me too. So when in doubt, always say ask the customer. So I tried to reach out to as many people in the Hamlin community to see what they felt about it. And the APB went out from a number of us to get people to come tonight. And the president of the homeowner association did come, which I thought was important. She came to the commission meeting too, to state a point of view. So it, it's important to know that. I also reflect on the fact that when I asked the fire chief today, do we get paid to respond to these calls? There is an agreement that the, the town gets paid to respond to each of those. So that, that's not an issue from my, my standpoint because they have a negotiated agreement on that. Next, the, I look at this sort of like from the Old Village. If, if I happened to live in the Old Village, been there 43 years. And so if somebody came to me and said, we'd just like to lop off the bottom, bottom end of Pitt Street. We think that'd be nice to annex because we wouldn't have to have those onerous restrictions of the Old Village. I would, I would find that a bit startling. And I think most of our other people would too. So that, that's an issue. Again, I don't know what all the customers want in that area, if they would like to have the settlement community or not because in the case of the Old Village, it's been around a long time. This one's fairly new. So it'd be interesting for me to know more about that. The, the other is that I would feel a lot more comfortable, given in the paper today, there was a situation where the, the preservation, conservation area has been challenged by Charleston County. In fact, the Charleston County, if I believe I read it correct, voted against the conservation in that particular area. Well, that was unsettling. So that, you can see it's a bit of a dilemma. So where I thought it was, would be best to end up is when the Old Village Historic District was changed, Historic District Preservation Commission. It was changed for the reason that we could take areas like this with the consensus and buy it of the communities and have these districts for the protection. I do think we'd have better service if the, if our town did it versus the county. But I'd feel a whole lot better if I voted for it and I knew I had protections. And, and I think, you know, so we're put in that dilemma because we don't have them. And what it causes in my mind, a domino effect in a settlement community. And the only way this happens is you, you have to buy a lot that's on the road where you can have access to water and sewer. If you buy that lot, you can buy the next lot, the next lot, the next lot. And so I'm, I'm inclined reluctantly to vote decline. Decline because I, I think we need to have the time to see what needs to happen. And I'd love to see our conservation districts come, come along.
Mr. Rambo?
So as the chair of the wire supply committee obviously served on it, Mal Pleasant Water Works as well. And so I want to make one thing clear in that if, let's say this property is denied for annexation and that property then develops under the county and gets water and sewer. Okay? Oh, can you leave it on that, the yellow one?
Which one? The yellow?
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, sorry. So if, if it's denied and it gets water and sewer, okay. Now you, you create actually a chain reaction where all of these surrounding properties can be developed within the county and get water and sewer because they're adjacent to a lot that gets water and sewer. And all they do is, all they have to do is sign a covenant that, oh yeah, we'll come into the town eventually once we're contiguous, if that ever happens at all. So then you create this reward system of, most developers would love to develop in the county without coming to the town. They don't have to pay impact fees and our standards are stricter. And then you don't have future Mal Pleasant property taxes either. And so I actually think, I hear your point, but I think you're actually creating the opposite effect of that, in my opinion. So anyway.
Mr. Icavano?
Thank you for that. It was excellent.
Ms. Reed, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With this property, if it were to come into the town as one lot, would we, would, would it have to come to council in order to be subdivided?
No, ma'am. That would go to the planning commission. They would approve a sketch plan. And then it goes through all the technical review for engineering and all that.
And what's the standard for approval or denial of a subdivision?
It has to meet, it's supposed to meet certain lot sizes, dimensions, standards. It's, they have to meet drainage, trees.
But the planning commission could deny.
The planning commission can deny, yes, ma'am.
So, okay, so if it comes to the town.
I just want to be clear on that. The position is they can deny. However, it, it must be based on a denial in order to stand must be based on a regulations, meaning it's not discretionary. Assuming they meet those requirements, there's likely a legal right to do that.
Okay. Mr. Icavano, did you have something? You're good? Okay. Did anyone else have any? All right. We have a motion to approve items one and two. I think maybe we need to do a real call though.
Mr. Brownstein?
Yes.
Mr. Brownstein votes yes. Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman votes yes. Ms. Hyatt? Ms. Hyatt votes yes. Mr. Icavano?
Yes.
Mr. Icavano votes yes. Mr. Rambo?
Yes.
Mr. Rambo votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Tinkie?
Clarification of Mr. Rambo, I vote yes.
Mr. Tinkie votes yes. Mayor Haney is absent. Ms. Whitley? Yes. Ms. Whitley votes yes.
That's first reading of ordinance is 25019 and 25020.
Moving on to item three. We have a first reading to rezone R, to R2 from, from an area-wide business.
Yes, ma'am. This is 106 May Lane. So it's a small parcel. As you can see here, adjacent to Earl's Court.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. We are in discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item four.
First reading ordinance number 25021.
Item number four, an ordinance to rezone public institutional, seven parcels.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. We are in discussion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
First reading ordinance number 25022.
Okay, moving on to item B1, final reading, an ordinance, an ordinance for annexation of 11.16 acre tract of land at Venning.
Yes, ma'am. So as you recall, this received first reading, but there was a request to take it back to committee. At the committee, the, at the developer applicant showed that they were able to meet that one condition. So they have a 50-foot buffer here, they have a 50-foot buffer here, and then they have the 25-foot perimeter buffer. At the committee meeting, there was a further condition that if there is lighting located on the property for any sort of security purposes, there would be no spill over to adjacent properties. So that comes back to you with being able to meet all those conditions that have been attached so far.
I, I would like to make a motion for discussion purposes to put a 50-foot buffer along the, I discussed it at the last meeting, along that section there.
Here?
Yes, where the, where the houses are. And it doesn't look like.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to approve and then, and then make a motion to amend?
So Madam Chair, the first item on the agenda is the annexation.
Okay.
And then, and then you are correct. If there is a motion to approve, there can be discussion and then amendments to that motion.
I'll move to approve the annexation.
All right, we have a motion to approve annexation. We have a second. We are in discussion. Any discussion? Oh, yes.
Yes, just a real quick question about how this property is currently zoned within the county. What, what type of zoning does this have?
Of course. So it's currently zoned R4 in the county, which is a residential zoning. It allows for four units an acre.
Wait, how many?
Four units.
Forty, four zero.
No, 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 ma'am.
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. But, but I do want to add that the county allows density bonuses for affordable housing. So they could get up to 16 if they did a, an affordable housing development. But the base zoning, no density bonuses, it's four units an acre.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that it, Mr. Brown?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item two.
Reading ordinance number 25013. My apology.
Sorry. I'm jumping the gun. Moving on to item number two. Mr. Icavano?
I'd like to make a motion to put a 50-foot buffer.
We had an approved, motion to approve.
Oh, motion to approve. I'm sorry. I'm a little preoccupied. I apologize. Go ahead. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We are in discussion. Is there another motion?
I would like to make a motion to put a 50, to put a 50-foot buffer along that section as discussed with the neighborhoods back there. And it doesn't look like, I'll, I'll go to discussion after if I have a second.
We have a motion to make it a 50-foot buffer. Is there a second? We have a second on the 50-foot buffer.
I mentioned this at the, at the last meeting actually because we have the housing. My fear on the 50-foot buffer is, can it actually happen? I don't know because I believe there's law, there's maybe power lines or not, or, or the actual cables there. So I don't want to put them in a quandary in which they can't put anything there either. Do we know if you could put a 50-foot buffer there?
The only one I know of, and I think it was mentioned in a public comment, there is a 25-foot easement here. So there was concern about that, but I think that's alleviated because it's actually a 50-foot buffer. I, I'm not sure about the section that you are referencing, but I do know that the applicant is here and, and maybe knows if there is something prohibiting 50-feet buffer on this section.
Are they allowed to speak?
Yeah, they're, if they're here, we can call them forward.
Hey, good evening. My name is Tony Woody. Civil engineer with Thomas and Hutt Engineering Company in Mal Pleasant.
Is there any, I think the question for Mr. Icavano, was, was there any reason why the buffer could not be extended at 50 feet?
Well, there are, there are guide wires. You can see them on the plan. If we extend the buffer, the buffer will extend into some of those guide wires, which will limit the height of anything that's planted. So what this, the other thing, what, what this attempts to show is that area right there, right now is cleared of everything. And what this shows is the activity area, how far the activity area is away from the back of those residential units. And the back of all of those residential units has a six-foot high privacy fence on it right now. So we're, you know, we're, we're confident that the 25-foot buffer is an actual improvement over what we have now and also allows us to move forward with what's being proposed.
Yes, Mr. Tinkie?
To the 25-foot buffer on the, the, I just call it the south side, the bottom side and on the west side. Right now, that's, that's a walkable 25 feet. There's no trees in that space, correct?
There are trees in that space. You can see them on the, on the aerial of, that's underneath it. There is a section along the lake that is clear. I'm sorry, I know what you're talking about now. There's a power line easement that goes through there. So you can walk underneath that power line easement. That's what you're asking.
Well, I'm thinking at the very, the whole south line and then up the other side, having walked it, there's, it's a fairly green walking path. And the trees really start on the next side, furthest away from the 25 feet. So it's already, it's sort of a cleared area. Are you, that 25-foot buffer, are you suggesting that that's where you're going to plant the trees? Because there's currently a lot of trees just behind that line that are already there that would provide the buffer that you would need. Unfortunately, it would take some of the parking spots. But I'm, I'm concerned about the subdivision below, the subdivision to the west that if, that if you're putting new trees in there and cutting down those mature trees that are all along those two lines, it's going to really open up to a really, a fairly industrial use.
Well, we would never cut down a tree to plant a tree. So that's not going to, if, if the 25-foot buffer has enough vegetation to meet their criteria that the town has in place, it would stay as is. If it doesn't have enough trees and shrubs to meet the criteria, it would be supplemented. What's also proposed is a fence. And there's been discussions, we've had with the town staff, that the fence would go behind the buffer. So the people living across the lake would have the benefit of the greenery with the fence behind it. So it will be very difficult to see, you know, the, the parked RV or boat that would, that would be parked in that space.
I think I did a poor job of explaining. So I think the heavy tree cover is where the, where the parking spots are at the bottom. And the heavy tree cover is along where they, they're parked here. You'd have to, there's a substantial tree cover there. So I may be the only one concerned about it, but I'm making sure that there's substantial buffer to the subdivisions, west and south. But because it looks like you'll be planting in some of those areas, but maybe not. Maybe I'm, I'm wrong on that.
Well, certainly the intent is to provide the buffer, right? I don't, I don't know the exact answer to your question, but certainly in the corner, you can see there's a lot more than the 25 feet that we have, that nothing is planned for.
For clarification, it seems like to the west and to the south is a pond?
It is.
So there's no houses?
That's correct.
Okay.
They're across, no, they're across the way. All of a sudden, right now, you have a view of a heavily wooded lot, heavily wooded lot. And there's houses all along the side and they have the view of that, the stormwater. I know they're not protected legally for having that necessarily. But if you're able to, to cut down the trees here, you need to make, I would think you'd want to make sure that you have enough tree buffer there so that people all of a sudden don't see trees being cut and they lose their, the, the view to, to the woods that I think could ease, across the water, that they could easily protect.
If, if I could insert, I mean, there's a number of trees that are along the water that are off of our property. I mean, that's what you're seeing. If you look, if you look at the image, you can see it on the aerial photo that extends beyond the property line.
Okay.
And there's no plan to, to get into those areas.
Maybe you're answering my question better. So really the walkway that when you walk the front, it's outside of the, of where you're showing the buffer now?
Yes, if it, if it's not, we, we will have to move. We can't plant underneath the power lining.
Okay.
Okay, we, is there any further questions for? No? We have no further questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Ms. Reed, we, so we have a, we have a motion to amend. Oh, is there?
I just want to make sure that my comments about the
The lighting.
Lighting. Were included in whatever motion is made.
Oh, well, I think we can do that as a separate motion because I think we should take this separately, this 50-foot buffer.
I'll leave that, I'll leave Madam Chair.
Okay. So let's do the 50-foot buffer first and then we'll go, and someone can make a motion on the lighting. So we have a motion to extend this to a 50-foot buffer. And then we have a second. We're in discussion. Is there any further discussion on this? I have a question. The current plan that is proposed, Ms. Reed, is this, is this set?
This is a conceptual. DRB has to review and approve all of this.
Because it seems like the active, like what the developer's saying, the active civil engineer, the active portion of this doesn't extend, right? There's like that barrier of the pond and it doesn't extend that far, right? So would, so the question I have is would a, would a 50-foot buffer make a difference? It's 80, yeah, it's 84 feet. So the active, the active area is 84 feet from there. So does the buffer make a difference? I don't, I guess that's my question. Would extending the buffer make? Would extending the buffer make a difference?
Well, I mean, it appears that there's already plantings there, so if they're required to have a buffer, and I think what he was talking about here is all this off the property line. But what you're talking about is through here, right?
Right.
Um, there is that distance, it does appear that there are plantings there. The, the fifty, whether it's twenty five or fifty feet, they're going to have to establish a buffer. So if there's already trees or vegetation or plantings there, they're going to keep that, cause that's going to save them from having to plant and it's mature, and then they're going to fill in with what's required. So it's really, it's really a matter of, um, of, of what council wants to do, whether it's twenty five or fifty.
Well, it seems like we're protecting the houses on the, you know, north section there, why not protect the ones on the east, in my opinion, okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So the motion to amend to add that fifty foot buffer is there, do I have a motion about lighting?
I move, uh, if you could show.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There we go.
While there's no plan in front of us that shows lighting, I would hope there will be. And in, in the event there is, that I would want to make sure that we require that no lighting spills over into, uh, the, the residential community. And also, um, I would like to recommend all of the other items, I guess we've already done the buffer, so I don't need to make a motion on that. But I'm particularly concerned about any lighting not spill over into the residential neighborhood.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, to ensure that the lighting is located on property with no spill over to adjacent properties. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, so we have before us an amended motion with a fifty foot buffer and specifics as to the lighting for approval of, um, final reading to this amendment to the zoning map. Item B two, is there any further discussion, Mr. Rambo?
Yeah, the only other thing that I think came up at the last council meeting, I think the mayor brought it up, is, um, noise, um, as far as like, what would be the hours of operation, and when you have these types of RVs and stuff, if you're parking them in the middle of the night, you've got the loud beeping when you're backing it up and stuff like that, so is there, um, what governs that, is that just the noise ordinance, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just like any other business in, in our town.
Okay, alright.
Alright, we ready to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Final reading ordinance number two five zero one four.
We have already done items three and four, now we have item number P five, the pepper tracts.
Yes.
And there was some amendments that needed to occur.
Well, so it was placed on consent agenda, and just as Mr. Pedlar already stated out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to pull it off, just to make sure we had all those amendments that have been discussed, because it's been kind of a long process. So we just want to make sure that we have, um, the, the location is moved, it's designated to the six acre tract, which is over a thousand feet from the residential. Um, it, you can only do this specific use, um, on that six acres, nowhere else in any parcel zoned or commercial. Um, it must be located in that spot, and that particular use, that six acre, is limited to thirty five foot maximum height. And then the modification to the buffer, which is in the original spot adjacent to residential, um, the buffer standard for there is to have that thirty five foot buffer and the eight foot masonry wall in place of the berm, so as not to disturb all of the vegetation that's matured over the last, um, eight or nine years. And so I just wanted to make sure that this was all incorporated and not missed through the consent agenda.
So do we need a motion to approve and then a motion to amend and adopt these?
Yes ma'am, and the amendment could be just a, um, reference to what is currently on the screen, if that is appropriate.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have a motion to amend?
I'll move, we amend the original motion to the final condition from the planning committee.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we are in discussion, is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Just, um, a question for, for Ms. Reed. Um, the changes to the buffer and the changes to where the storage yard or the storage area, um, falls within the, uh, PD, um, were those changes made as a result of, uh, feedback from the residents of that neighborhood?
During the first submittal, so if, and if you'll recall, there was an original PD submittal that showed this use over here. Um, and there can, uh, council had concerns, the public had concerns, and instead of taking it through the process with a lot of changes, um, the, it was withdrawn and the applicant, the applicant resubmitted based on those recommendations. And so this is actually the new submittal with all of those, um, changes in addition to what the committee has recommended that you just saw. So, yes, sir.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, so we have an, before us, an amended motion, uh, final reading, um, on the amendment to the pepper tract PD, is that we are in discussion on the amendment motion, does anyone have anything to add? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Final reading ordinance number two five zero one five.
Moving on to item C, annexation.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry, ma'am, what item are you referencing?
I think we're on item nine A.
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, I went back to the wrong, wrong, well, my goodness, I'm, we're flipping all around, never mind, never mind, forget, forget all that. We're on item nine, committee action item, sorry, we were there, we'd already did that one.
I'm still seconding it. Motion to approve.
We'll withdraw.
Still seconding.
It's all withdrawal. Um, alright, mo- moving on to nine A, Health, Recreation and Events Committee. We have consideration of approval to accept the donation from USTA.
Do you want to make a motion?
Ms. Hyatt?
Yes. We have, uh, consideration of donation acceptance from the United States Tennis Association of South Carolina and the Low Country Tennis Association for repairs at the Kerr Tennis Center. It says the United States Tennis Association of South Carolina and the Low Country Tennis Association have approved a donation of thirty five thousand dollars to be given to the town of Mount Pleasant for repairs to four courts at the Muggsy Kerr Tennis Center. These funds will be used to help repair courts nine through twelve. As such, I move that council accept the donation from the United States Tennis Association of South Carolina and the Low Country Tennis Association for repairs at the Kerr Tennis Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? We are in discussion, is there any discussion? Just a great thank you?
Just a big thank you.
Yes, we, I think we, they're in attendance, right?
Yes, they are, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the donation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item B, Planning Committee, I've got something to read here. So staff received an application from Mount Pleasant citizen Candace Johnson and her family requesting approval of a memorial dedicated to honoring pets that have passed. Candace and her family wish to donate the bridge to the town of Mount Pleasant in memory of their beloved dog Waffles that passed away in December. The memorial, a physical rainbow bridge, will serve as a space for the community to honor their pets and provide closure with the option for people to hang their pets' collars. The bridge is proposed to be located at the town's Shem Creek Park next to Pelican Peak. Planning staff has been in coordination with the Public Services Department for placement and maintenance. As a matter of record, the application did not go to the historical commission, as it was determined it has no historical significance and therefore is not under their purview. At the, at the March thirty first meeting, Planning Committee recommended approval. Do we have a motion on this?
I'd like.
Mr. Brown?
Can I, can I speak without making a motion?
Of course.
I'm just not sure about the, the location of this, I feel like it needs to be close to a dog park. Um, and so I know we've got a new dog park, um, under construction and waterfront park, two of them, and, at waterfront park. And so I'm just sort of wondering out loud if that might be a better location, uh, for this wonderful memorial to Waffles and other, um, deceased pets. Um, which is, is definitely, um, you know, something meaningful to me as well, I love, love dogs and cats.
And Ms. Hyatt?
Um, I had the same consideration when we discussed it at committee, um, I thought that that might be a nice location for it.
Any other?
Memorial park.
No, I agree, like I said, we got two, two dog parks, one for big dogs and one for little dogs at our waterfront park that we're, we're building out there, so it would be a perfect place to have.
Alright, so.
So I guess I'm wondering what we need to do in terms of a motion, if they just could maybe work with staff? Um, or if that's something that we need to be involved with.
Mr. Pedlar?
If, if, um, council can make a motion to, um, prefer and direct that location subject to staff review and approval, which would mean if staff has a concern with that, it would come back to council. Um, I guess the other option is, if, um, council would like to refer it perhaps to planning commissioner or some committee. Um, first, you could do that as well, but the, the first option seems more efficient.
I'd like to move for the first option.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, Mr. Rambo?
Um, I, I, my question is the, so the funds to build it are being a hundred percent donated, correct? Correct?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm told, yes.
What about the funds to maintain it? Um, to keep it pretty, a good working order? Um, I don't know the engineering on, if there's like tons of collars that are put there, like, like over time, like what happened, do those deteriorate? What, do they deteriorate the, um, sides of the bridge, like, I mean, I, I think of the, what's the bridge in Europe with the, people put the locks on it? Like, the city has to go like, cut those locks off like, every so often, cause they will like topple the bridge, basically? Or like, I, I don't know, I just have questions about how that works and, and I, I, I don't know, I, I think those things should be considered first before we, uh, move for approval. Not that it's not, it's an amazing idea, I just don't know how that works, so that's my question for staff, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking maybe that if we give first, um, reading, we can get, get this done before second reading.
I don't believe this has more than one reading, it's just a resolution.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's not two readings, so those are great questions. Um, we can, we can get more information and bring it back to you, um, at next.
I feel like there needs to be more than just a construction plan, there needs to be kind of a long term, like what's the maintenance plan look like and what are the policies on, like somewhat, like if you do have to go every so often, clean it and cut off, or take off all those dog collars, and then people are going to be very upset that that happens, I just, I don't know, I just hate to see the bad in things, but.
Yes, sir, staff can come back, um, I'm confident with a location as well as a plan, um, for that in consultation with the, um, with the family who made the request, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, so my request for council would be, I, I would like to, I would like to hear all of that again, so I, I don't know if, if, if people are interested in that, I mean, instead of just saying, okay, staff can figure that out, I would kind of like to hear what those plans are before we approve.
Right, sir, um, we don't, uh, in consultation with staff, I don't think we need a motion at this point to do that. We can do that and bring it back in accordance with everyone's comments, if that's appropriate.
And it, there is, wait, I can't remember, is there, there's a motion on the table, isn't there?
There is.
There is, if you'd like to vote on that, that's fine.
We can go to that, or if you want to withdraw at this point, Mr. Acapono?
I just have, I just have one thing, I, I know funding was raised, I guess that has to go probably through finance committee anyway. And that does not have to, are we building this, but?
So they have donated the funds, um, for this, so the.
Who's building it, is my question.
The, um, the applicant is working with somebody to build it, and they're, Kate, do you want to come?
Well, I guess that's the question too, right, we go into this. There's, I'm building this in my yard, and I'm building this on, on public government property, which ends up taking it to a whole nother level of heavy commercial, I just want to make sure that we're.
So if you're okay with it, the applicant is here today and she can speak to some of that, but, um, the ordinance does specifically say that the town is willing or required and approved to maintain it for five years.
The town does?
On the town, yes, that's what the ordinance says.
But are we building it to specs that the town would build it, especially since they're talking about putting it at the dog park?
Yes, so we have talked to.
Like if it collapses with people standing on it? And it's on government property?
And so people wouldn't be standing on it, it's going to be blocked off, so it's not actually going to be for pedestrian, it's more like an art piece.
Okay.
But, um, it's going to look like a bridge, but it's going to be, um, it's going to be blocked off, and so it'll have the signs on either side. But, um, as, but the town is required for five years to maintain it. The applicant did say that, you know, she would sign something with the town to, um, maintain it, but that was something that came up with public services, that was a, um, concern.
So is there a way to get kind of an estimate of what the costs would be to maintain it for five years? And if that's something that the applicant is willing to cover and sort of place in an account to cover that sort of maintenance for five years, so that there's no cost to the town? Is that, I mean, and I, I know that there had been some discussion of that, um.
Are you okay with the applicant speaking on that?
Oh, Mr. Mr.?
I was just going to say, we're happy to come back with all the details necessary at the next meeting.
Next month, okay, um, Mr. Hyatt, Ms. Chow?
Ms. Madam Chairman, I asked this question at committee. We are putting up a beautiful monument on public property. We have a historic commission, and I realize that this may be a little bit different for them, but we need some of their advice for all of these things that we're asking questions about. You know, we, we've got a lot of questions, and there may be more questions. That's why we have this commission, to think about those kind of things for us. And this is a beautiful monument, but I'd like to hear what they have to say about something like this going on our property.
Would it be more appropriate for the Culture Arts and Pride Commission?
That's what, that's what we were just thinking, being, since there's no historical significance, perhaps cultural, we take it to Cultural Arts and Pride for, look at location and all these details, and then it comes back to you.
I think that maybe makes.
Would that?
Yeah, I think that's.
Should we withdraw motion, or?
Or just revise it to defer this to Cultural Arts and Pride?
Okay.
With a preference that it go near a dog park.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer? We have a second? No, we already had a second, so do you want to amend your second?
Yes.
So we have a motion, we've amended motion, amended second to defer to cap with a preference for a dog park location. Is there any further discussion on the rainbow bridge? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item ten A one, this is first reading of an ordinance to adopt our budget.
So this is the first reading of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget ordinance. The total proposed budget is one hundred and sixty six million, three hundred, three thousand, one hundred, sixty six dollars.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We, we, we had a second already from Mr. Acapono?
I'm sorry.
Um, it's alright.
I can't hear that far.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading to adopt our budget, we are in discussion, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, item B, old business, there is no old business. If there's nothing further to come before this council, we stand adjourned.